Like to call this work session to order on Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. For the record, all city council members are present this evening. As are members of the staff. We welcome you here this evening and hope you, I hope you had a nice holiday weekend. I think it was really nice. I know in, in Riverdale, it was really, seemed like it was really good. Do we have anything for public comment, Michelle, that you're aware of this evening?
Mr. Mayor. I've had a couple neighbors approach me. They're, they may or may not be here. If they don't come, I'll present what their issues are.
Okay.
Either I can give you a heads up. I kinda, I just talked to them. She said she was, had a conflict. She didn't know if she was gonna be able to make it.
Okay.
Want me to present now or, or at the end?
All right, wait and see if they show. And if they don't show, you're welcome, unless you prefer to do it now.
Doesn't matter.
I think let's wait and see if they come and then that way we don't have.
Seasons, I think Espinoza, who is Elizabeth Carlin's granddaughter.
Right.
And Becky Henderson.
Okay.
Alright.
Sounds good. Doesn't have to do with diesel trucks, does it?
Uh, yeah, it does. That's one of the issues, yeah.
Been there before, so I just wondered, yeah.
Running their generators all night.
Yeah, yeah, they park on the other side of that wall there, then they.
And then they get up and relieve themselves and it wretched smells.
Eat and wake it, and that's too bad, yeah, they don't, don't need that, so. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm just gonna say, I don't understand people. That's all I was gonna say, but I don't understand.
Well, we need to put a porty potty over there for something.
Nope, jugs.
Ooh, this isn't a cherry orchard, like. We're in a town now. Sorry.
Okay, move on next to Mayor's Report. I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved in the celebration over the weekend. I've, gee, I've had all kinds of calls and responses and emails and texts about how well everything went. And it just seemed like it went like clockwork. It really, really was good. I don't know if anybody got hurt. I know Chief Sholly told me last night, knock on wood, there hadn't been any fires. And gee, I've just seen all kinds of, I mean, everything prayed, everything. It was just nothing but positive, great comments. Fireworks, you can look in Facebook, Riverdale citizens in a few places. And it's just nothing but great on the fireworks. It was best ever, best ever seen. And, you know, just people were amazed by it, just some, some wonderful comments. But I think it's a tribute to people we have here, the staff, the council, elected officials, everybody. It's just a combined effort. And no matter where you work or what you do, you're all part of it. And our job is to, well, I say the first, first reason that you have cities form, towns and cities is to provide services. And the second is to provide a sense of community. And, well, I think we really did that yesterday. That's what Dave Gibby talked about in the Sunrise Services Community and how important that was. And what a great community Riverdale is. And just, just things were, were really good. I know Mr. Kobe spent about all day here with his family and he just did about some everything.
It was great.
He's, I'm probably stealing his thunder, but I, I heard him talk about it a couple times today. And he definitely feels like he's part of the community now. So sees what it's like, why people like what they like and why they like it so well. So, super job by everybody. It's really, really good. I had one item, but I, other item, but I'll wait and see if we have time. We get through this agenda in the work session. It isn't something that needs to be talked about, but it's, it would, just kind of an information thing for you. I'm gonna move on next to the consent items. First one's consideration to approve the meeting minutes from June 15th, 2021. City Council work session and also the council meeting on the same date. Do you have any changes or corrections to the minutes?
They didn't get finished. So, and I just found that out today. So we'll be putting them again on the next meeting.
Okay, super good. Nobody has any input then, do they?
Well, I was like, makes it quick.
That's beside.
Braden's lurking around, he usually.
Say something.
Go ahead, Alan.
There's a follow with another packet.
It never came, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes that next agenda item a little difficult, doesn't it?
Additional consent item tonight, consideration to appoint Michelle Maragonia as our new city recorder. Talk a little bit more about her and.
She's right there.
She's right there and she's, she's very hopeful. She'll be appointed. I'll, I'll just tell you a few things about her here. We had, what do we have, Stacy, about seven we interviewed and probably more, how many, 20, 10 or 20?
A lot of applications.
Lot of applications, but we interviewed seven. There was four on the panel. I think Michelle had two first place votes, as I remember. She came to us from the Sheriff's Department. I'm gonna steal your thunder, cause you're gonna, if, if you're appointed, you have to get up and give a speech, so. Wait and see. Now, we might, we'll see. Anyway, we're happy to have her with us. She came from the Sheriff's Department. She had quite a few years there and I think she's been here since the 17th, working as an employee. And I think Bill's pretty happy with what she does and her, just everything attitude and things about her. Move on to the action items. This first one is approve a resolution amending personnel policies handbook. And I'm not gonna read all the different chapters and verses. Mrs. Colmo, would you like to address that, please?
Unless you have any questions, I really don't have anything for this meeting.
For this meeting? Okay. Okay, and next one is most, go ahead.
I, I was wondering if we could possibly table that and move it to an executive session? So we could talk about some stuff that's not gonna make the paper.
Okay, yeah, do you wanna do that tonight after?
I, I would, I mean.
Okay.
Just one of five.
That'd be good, while Stacy's there, too.
We have to provide notice for a closed meeting, right?
No, we'd table it.
Yeah, unless it's emergency. I, I guess my question is, under what grounds is, are we talking about specific individuals? Is that what you're worried about, Alan? I, I just don't know that it would qualify, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, no, we're not talking about specific, specific individuals at all. It's, I mean, I would, I would share some stuff from my work, kinda stuff. But there's no specific individuals at all. So, I mean, if it doesn't qualify for an executive session, then.
That's, that's what my fear is. I don't know that it would unless we are dealing with individuals like that. It may not even qualify, so.
Okay.
Proceed.
Okay. We'll just have that then in the.
I did have a quick question, if we have just a second, just so I understand something. It has to do with the section on communicable diseases. Some of it was in yellow and some of it was in red. The red kinda looked like the, the addition of like COVID, you know, SARS-CoV-2. What, what did the yellow mean? Was it, was it?
It was just some additions that our attorney actually wanted.
Well, that was not previously in there either, then that's all new too.
No, it is new, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, okay, I liked it, but I, I just wasn't sure if that was all new as well or whether it was just added pink.
It was, I did it, I added it afterwards. I probably should've put a comment on there, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
It's okay. So, so that's all new then, all the yellow, so, okay. That helps me now, so thank you.
Good, move on next. To approve a new liquor license for the Dong Ya, owner of Boathouse Cajun Restaurant. Michelle, do you have anything on that for this meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's all pretty straightforward. I have, they've already turned in everything they need, so.
All the applications the police chief recommended, and so that's.
It's okay to say no, you can just be like, no.
Okay, move on to consideration of resolution 2021-21 to award the bid to Paradise Contractors Incorporated for fire station kitchen remodel. Chief Sholly, do you have anything for this?
I think I laid out the explanation between the two pricing and got the two bids. And the third contractor didn't send a bid in, but kinda gave us a rough quote, but never sent a official bid. So, do you have any other questions for me?
Do you have any questions for the chief? Okay. Move on to consideration of resolution 2021-20 to approve an extension agreement with Stoffler's Towing for non-consent vehicle towing services within Riverdale City. Chief Brinkman, do you have anything for this meeting?
Unless you guys have questions, I know some of you are familiar with it. We just wanna go ahead and, it's expiring in July, mid-July, so we wanna recommend an extension of that contract. They've been great service providers, so. So all it is, is trying to extend that for two years.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
The resolution number on that should actually be 2021-22.
Okay.
Strike two. Just kidding.
We're about two strikes today, didn't we? Yep.
I have it before today.
Okay, move on next. Discussion on during, regarding water restrictions. I asked to put that on, you know, last meeting, we talked about water restrictions. What we came up with, what we discussed is what, we went that way with those water restrictions every other day by house number. Odd on, odd days and even on even days. But we did it just like we had said and that's, that was put on Facebook. It's, it hasn't been the, they haven't got the water bills yet and that should be there. So, I know Sean had mentioned, or Bill mentioned, the goal is 20% reduction. And we're not there by quite a ways. We haven't had much of a reduction, but then I got thinking, well, there's a lot of people, the ones that don't, that reads Facebook. They don't even know about it. So I think we'll see a difference when it, it comes out in with the water bills and the.
Has there been, has there been any comparison to like last year versus just month to month? Or how, how is the reduction?
Sean, Sean could tell us, but he isn't here tonight, so.
What Sean had told me is that they'd seen only a, a 2% reduction year over year.
Oh, 2%?
2% was the only reduction. Now, it's only been a couple of weeks and so he said, maybe we need to give it a little more time to go through, but. I was just curious, cause it seems like people have already done it. In my neighborhood, I mean, my backyard neighbor, for one, is just, I mean, they voluntarily did it before we even said anything.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a lot of people that did that, so it's surprising that it's only 2%. We're still looking at the numbers, though.
Ours was pretty good. Our, our controller, I went in and I changed the date so it'd be on even days. There's a place of seasonal adjust on there. And so I just set it at 80, 80%. So I figured I was saving 20% right there, so. That took care of that, at least for now, you know. Others, I haven't seen too much from the other cities. I told you that what I'd read before our last meeting was most of the cities were going every other day. I know that Weber Basin Waters asked for twice a week for landscape. But I haven't seen much. I did hear, my wife heard it on the news, I think it was after our last meeting or right after. Yeah, they'd had their meeting, I think, same night as we did. They went to one day a week, right off the bat. They called it tan is the new green, I think, is what they said, so. So anyway, they really, really got serious about it real quick, so. We'll just have to kinda watch and see how it goes. But the, I looked today, we didn't get the city utility bill, so. That should be out in the next day or two, along with the newsletters, so.
We had such great success on the fireworks. And I know in River Glen, we had a little thing attached to our doorknob. I assume the fire department passed that out. Was that just in River Glen or was that all the?
It was all throughout the city and our areas that we can felt that there was a concern.
Yeah, I thought that was very effective. We may wanna consider something similar for the water.
Yeah, it was a good thing and we had, I think he had some recreation people helping pass some of those out. Yeah, they did all the wooded areas and plus the areas that were bordering. Anything on the water restrictions, any?
Just anecdotally, I did run into a Weber Basin guy this past week. And he, he was a little frustrated that we'd only gone every other day. He said they really wanted us to go twice a week.
Yeah.
I'm not pushing for it, like, I kinda pushed back a little bit, but, and it was just a passing discussion. It wasn't a city, official city thing, but.
Yeah.
I think if we get to 20%, they'd probably be pretty happy.
Yeah, I think if you can get 20%, that's the magic.
Yeah.
Magic thing, so hopefully we can do that.
According to what I know about West Haven, they went twice a week with fines if they're, if they go more than twice a week, so.
But I, I, I know people in West Haven that didn't even know about it as of our last meeting. They hadn't even heard about the restrictions from anybody, so.
Yeah, that's the thing, if you don't have a newsletter, something utility bill going out, if you rely on Facebook and that, it just.
Auto pay doesn't get anything, you know, they'll tell them to reduce it.
So they don't even see it, yeah. Yeah, that auto pay, that's, that's something to think about, too.
One other thing, Sean noted that our, our aquifer is down 10 feet so far this season.
10 feet?
So, now, a lot of that is due to Weber Basin pulling a lot more out to satisfy their needs out of the aquifer than they would out of the reservoirs, which are, are already low. So they're going to the, the ground sources rather than the surface to get their secondary stuff taken care of. But that's, that's where we get our water and it's already down 10 feet, so.
About half of our water, the other half comes from. And that, that's what I understand.
Is 10 feet a lot? I mean, it's 10 feet, but. It's a lot, it's enough that Sean took notice.
Aquifer in Weber County.
Right.
Is that typical for a summer, some drop?
Is it like 20, 10 of 20 or is it 10 of 10 pounds?
Very atypical.
Very atypical. Sean was concerned.
Some water.
Well, I'll have to keep a close watch on that then. It's, it doesn't sound good. Discussion regarding fireworks last week in our, our last meeting, we talked about fireworks and we had talked, even though it wasn't on the agenda, Mr. Brooks reminded me. And we talked about after the, yesterday, the holiday, that we would look at banning them for the rest of the season and, you know, the rest of the year, basically. And we did that and then the next day, Chief Sholly came and reminded us of the statute and that we really didn't have the authority to ban fireworks and. Was it Brooks?
Chief's like, it wasn't me.
Trouble maker.
The story I got it was Mr., Mr. Sholly. So anyway, from Steve Brooks, and it is the affidavit and that's the way the affidavit's written. We've seen a lot of cities abandon some cities, but even the governor couldn't ban them in the state of Utah, so. He did, he didn't, he couldn't, and they did. It'll be interesting to see. And I think that they've continued to sell the fireworks. If they would have banned the sale and the fireworks companies would have known what the Utah law is, which I'm sure they do. It could have been interesting, so.
What is the law? What's that?
It's the state statute to give.
Yeah, I know what a law is, but I'm saying, but what does they say? What does the state statute say that you're?
It gives the dates, it gives the dates, you can do it. It gives the times, probably gives the type of fireworks you can use. It also gives you what till May, Steve. May, you can designate restricted areas.
It depends on how you're gonna classify a particular area. If it's based upon history, you have to turn that into your county by, I think, May 1. If you're gonna declare it, because it's, say it's a hillside that just tends to catch on fire every year or whatever. If you're doing it based upon a current condition, then you can do stuff now, but you still have to jump through certain hoops. You can't just come in and say, we're gonna declare the whole city. You have to, and this is what I told Jared, you're gonna have to sit down and look at your map and say, yeah, this is a hazard because. You can't just say your whole city's under a hazard, because most cities probably aren't. And so that's where I really wonder if most of the cities even did that. And, and just by way of background, and this is probably my bigger concern, is this happened as a result of something. It was about, I don't know, it seems like 10 years ago. Same kinda thing happened, we had a dry year. All these cities came in and started doing this exact same stuff. And then that next, that year, the legislature came out with all these new rules and changes restricting on what you can do. And that's what my fear is, is if we're just gonna ignore state law, which we can't do, it's illegal. Wait till next legislative session, see what they do to us this time, so. We need to do it right, whatever we're gonna do, so that, that's the problem. And it's a lot more work than just saying, yeah, we're gonna do it, kinda thing, so.
And for clarification, instead of the county, it goes to state fire marshal's office. So the state fire marshal's office then gets those maps and then distributes them out to their website and throughout the counties.
Probably need to have you folks use the microphone, too, just so she's got it recorded. She may have a hard time doing the minutes, but you might mention what it was you put, you know, maybe come up and just talk about the flyers that you took around, what you did, where you took them and. What it said, so.
Uh, the flyers we passed out basically asked for a voluntary restriction, more, more than less. Just saying, please don't shoot them, it's a dry year, this is what we prefer you to do. And then a fireworks safety pamphlet that was attached to the side of it, that if you are gonna shoot them, here's some of the safety points. And as you can, if everybody saw the packet or the little flyer, it was, you had to put your readers on it, but hey, we, we got it done. And it was mostly done in any area that had a wooded area. We went up on all the restricted areas or near the restricted areas already. And we went right up against those lines and then out typically another four or five houses deep into it. And that's where we passed them out. We were right around 300 and something flyers is what we distributed out. So, and it was, uh, like I said, richest people came out and helped. We had four or five of his people and then the on-duty crews and myself.
Then Sean, was it Sean that put the signs up?
I did.
You did? Wow, attaboy.
Yeah, so then we put signs up at the entrance points of all restricted areas and then with the website. So they could go and find where the map was and look if they were in the restricted area or not.
That's great.
Which we clarified on Facebook.
I know some residents are happy because of the signs and that, they've asked for them, so that's.
Yeah, we put 15 signs up throughout the city.
Good, that's great. So far, so good. Do you have any questions or anything on fireworks?
As long as we're talking about fireworks, all I can say about that display last night was it was amazing. You guys did an excellent job. That was the best show I've ever seen in my whole life, so.
Spectacular.
Congratulations.
We knew people that had gone down to the Stadium of Fire and said, we exceeded the Stadium of Fire. That's a compliment.
Yeah, it was, it was first class. Yeah, it wasn't, it was, it was long, it was just, I mean, it was good, it was great. It wasn't cut short and yet it was very full and was really good, yeah. Move on to action item seven. Discussion regarding the sale of property on Ritter Drive, Mr. Kobe.
This is everyone's favorite topic for a conversation. We're really just hoping to get some direction. It's not an action item necessarily, cause we have the, the authorization already to declare this as surplus. But there's question regarding the disposition of it. I think staff's preference is to have this sold to help recoup some of the costs that were incurred in building Ritter Drive and developing that out. And we did have to buy this property at market value, even though it was in pretty tough shape, from what I understand. So we'd like to, we, we would recommend that we, or, or would like to proceed with the idea that we're going to get an agent and list this on the market just as a regular property for sale. So that's our, our staff recommendation. And if, if there's any other discussion on it, we'd be willing to entertain.
You have any questions for Bill at this point? Okay, thank you. Move on to discretionary items. Do we have any discretionary for this meeting? Okay. Let me just. We got a couple minutes, so I'll just take a minute. You know, every year UTA comes to our city, it's every year, every couple of years. They're looking at their long-range plan for transit here in the city. And we go over it, you know, we've got transit, couple areas, 4400 South and Riverdale Road what they can do to improve. We've looked at a lot of things, you know, you look at rapid transit bus, things like that. Then that would take two lanes to Riverdale Road, which doesn't appear to be a good idea, cause most people that come to shop bring their cars to, to buy what they, they take what they buy home. We do have a lot of workers here. And we looked at, I don't know, I just, I've seen the free trolleys in Ogden, the free trolleys in Leighton. And I just kinda wondered what they would be like if we had those trolleys, a couple of those trolleys running from between the intermodal stations and places like that along our, especially our work areas where people work, kinda speed that up. We inquired about it, I called Beth Holbrook, she's our trustee for this, for our county. And she and a couple of her people come up, their planners. And we took a ride last week, we'd worked out kind of a route. This is all just tentative, this is just kinda to provide you the information, what we looked at a little bit. But anyway, we looked at connecting it with the intermodal hub down at 23rd and, and Wall Avenue. We looked at, it come run through, go out 4400 out on out to the, by the airport to the front runner station, Roy, then back across the west bench by America First. And that area where it looks like there may be some new retail distribution, probably a lot of jobs in there. We've got a new medical and maybe Mike's gonna mention this, but that new three-story. that new three story office building, the whole lower floor is going to be taken by a medical training outfit. They'll be moving into that. So that's jobs south of there. And we looked at running it across to our past Larry Miller, along all those new flex buildings and those offices that are over there. North, we went up to the park and ride on Freeway Park Drive, then on over to Northrop Grumman, which is actually in Riverdale. A lot of cars parked out there, need for transit. But anyway, we looked at that and come up with the shuttle probably every 30 minutes. Takes about an hour to drive the whole thing. Then we went, come back, went down Ritter Drive down to 1050, went out to Riverdale Road and back on 900 around Walmart, but we went by the schools there and everything, the military academy and ended up going back out Riverdale Road down the intermodal center. So that's kind of what we did. It was just a what if kind of thing. They they mentioned that there is a cost. It isn't just because you're paying sales tax revenue, but cities normally pay about 25% of the cost. Which can be shared with businesses in your community like Northrop Grumman, America First, you know, on these different places, but that's all to be looked at. They said they'd take a look and just see, work it up. So you might think about that, whether it's even, don't know if it's even a good idea. Okay? You don't want a bunch of empty buses running around. That's what you see a lot of times. So we're just trying to think outside the box a little bit and help get people to and from work and make it easier for people to use the the public transit system. So any questions on that or anything? It's just just part of the mayor's report. So. And with that, do we have a motion to close the work session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Work session's closed. We'll move the council members who are present as are members of the city staff. We again welcome you tonight. Hope you had a good holiday weekend. I've asked Steve Brooks, our city attorney, if he'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'd like to take a moment of silence. As we take a moment of silence, we'd like to remember those who are serving in our military that help preserve the freedom of this great nation. We appreciate their service. We also ask you to remember our first responders, our firefighters and our police who put theirself in harm's way on a daily basis in our behalf. Ask you to remember our city council members as they make decisions tonight. They make make decisions that are in the best interest of those that we serve. We'll now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Move on next to our public comment portion. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding any concerns or ideas that you might have. No action will be taken during the public comment. Period. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes and if you have public comment, we would ask you to come up to the microphone and state your name if you would. And also remind those visiting tonight to sign in at the table just outside the door, if you would please. Time is now yours for public comment. Bart, would you like to?
You know, if it's all right, I'll do it during discretionary.
Just in the discretionary. Okay, that'll work. That'll be fun. Okay, seeing none, close the public comment period. Going to move on to the mayor's report. As we mentioned in the work session. It was a great holiday in Riverdale yesterday, and we sincerely thank all of you and all the people that you work with. And please pass it on. We sincerely appreciate their efforts and the great job yesterday. It was just really, it just really went like clockwork. Prayed the, all of them, I won't even start because we had stuff on Saturday night. We had things all day Saturday, tournaments and things and it was really just a time enjoyed by everybody and I've had more and seen more comments with accolades out of boys, out of girls than I think I've ever seen for for Old Glory Day celebration, but it was really good and we're we're very appreciative of safety. I know safety was paramount. We just, just everything really went well. No one was hurt and everybody just seemed to have a really, really good time. The fireworks, all the ratings are best ever and just amazing. And they just, they really, really liked what they saw in fireworks, chief and others involved. And it was a great thing. So thanks to all of you and your people for making Riverdale a great place to live because that was really pronounced loud and clear yesterday. People just really, really really happy. I think everybody went above and beyond. So congratulations and thank you. Move on to presentation number two. That's been crossed off the agenda for night. That should come back up. I understand it'll be on our second meeting of the month. They'll present that information. Got a community development status report. Turn the time to Mike Eggit. He's our community development director. Mike.
Good evening. As we do these every month now, I just want to give you a quick update of some of the things that are going on in the community, kind of the status, some of the projects. The first are the the few along this portion of Riverdale Road on the side of the bridge, Dutch Brothers Coffee, as you've probably seen today, is coming out of the ground. We got some framing. So it's kind of exciting to see the actual structure coming up out of the ground now. Cafe Rio, their next review will be their final inspection and they're planning to do grand opening ribbon cutting on August 6. So I'll get more information out as I know more about that, plan for that. Mobeta's, their next inspection will be a four way utility inspection. So they're coming along. The Auto Zone, if you drive by, has got signage up and that that split center is going on. So that that's kind of exciting to see that taking place. Raising Canes, they finally were able to get a contractor for the project. So we have a group coming out from out east to to fly in and take that contract under, but they're going to start to move forward on that. The site itself with D Hanson's offsite improvements are working aggressively. They're a little bit behind, but they're trying to to catch up so that they can be ready for Cafe Rio to to open and and operate on the 6th. The Maverick Store site on the Gibby Floral Property has resubmitted. That will be coming forth for a final review with the planning commission in the near future for their subdivision site plan. The Goat Barber Shop space, which is going in the old, it's the old Blockbuster Video. There was a mattress bedding place over here. That's moving forward as well. You've probably seen that they've redone the facade for that and are painting and finishing that up. Spark Studios Hair Salon going in over in the Riverdale Town Square next to Crumble Cookie. That's moving forward. As the mayor stated, in the Brookhaven Office Buildings, the main floor is a forthcoming medical company training facility. I don't know to what extent or or what that will look like yet. They haven't quite brought everything in for that. America First Credit Union is doing a a full lobby improvement project on, I believe it's their main building there. So that is going on. Green Hill Apartments at Riverdale, their big storm drain basin that they're installing in their parking lot is finally taking place. Which in its own right, that's kind of miraculous where the previous developer had brought that in. We're now kind of four years in the making, but it is finally taking place. So that's a good thing. And the, let's see, is that everything? Yep, I believe that's it. That's everything. Chick-fil-A is still in the process of doing their storm drain system cleanup before they can move forward with their project. That's a delay. They're trying to get that finalized, but that is obviously forthcoming as well. And I don't know if you have any other questions for me?
I mentioned Dutch Brothers. They're starting to frame that.
Right. Yeah, framing and coming up out of the ground. So that that's exciting. So driving down the section of Riverdale Road is quite different than it had been just a couple of months ago. So I don't know if there's any other questions for me.
That Cajun restaurant, I know there's.
Oh, yeah, Boathouse.
How is that coming along?
They're actually present. They're the ones that are applying for their liquor license and they're, they have received their final inspection. I believe their building or their business license has been issued otherwise.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So they're open. Yeah.
Just had a a quick comment. Sorry, Mayor, if I may. This is an exciting time to be in Riverdale. This is an exciting time for businesses and property owners and developers and and we're excited with all these new businesses coming into town. It makes our job busy.
Yeah, fun though.
But it's it's fun and interesting and there are some exciting things that are are in the offing as well that we'll bring to you as soon as they're ready. And so stay tuned and take your, take your vitamins.
Yeah, there's definitely more coming. I'll just say that.
Good. Any questions for Mike other than that?
Yeah, is there, is one of those, the ShopCo building, is that?
My understanding on that is it's under contract, but I don't know to what or or in what format. I've just heard through some brokers that that's the case. Beyond that, I don't know at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For that. Okay, move on. Next, consideration to prove a meeting minutes from June 15th, 2021, the council, see, they're not in the packet, excuse me. That's what happens when you read the agenda. Consent item number two. This is consideration to appoint Michelle Marigoni. Is our new city recorder, as I mentioned in the work session. We had a lot of applicants. We had seven that we interviewed. There was a panel of four people. Mrs. Como, Mr. Eggit, Mr. Cobeb and myself. I think she's going to be doing a little bit of work to help with our community development department. So Mike, Mike was on the panel also, but we found her to be great attitude, some experience, none of the one applicant was well, most of the applicants, let's just put it that way, most of them would need some training to hire. There was one that we actually looked at and that had had little, had more experience, had city recorder experience, but we weren't able to pick her up and we did go ahead with Michelle. She was very impressive. I told you, she got to the number one picks out of the four panels. So she was, she was right up there with the other person. So she's, she's good. She's got a great work record and we'd like to present her name, your consideration tonight to point her as our new city recorder. So do you have any questions for? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just maybe the city administrator and the city attorney can help also. But when we're making appointments, it is to have advanced information is is makes it easier to vote yea. And, you know, putting in a packet, the resume. You know, because, I mean, I got the, I got the packet in the mail with the name that I didn't recognize. So I assumed that was the person, but you know, you you gave glowing report, but it still would be nice to have something to look at, a background, a resume, so, you know, because it it does help solidify in my mind, my advice and consent.
So you're you're talking just the resume and that for the individual that was selected.
Right, for for the one we're appointing.
That's a consideration. Stacy, Steve, I know what's your thoughts? You know, with appointed officials, it's kind of like planning commission. We appoint those. It's a mayor's appointment. These others are and talking with Stacy, we went over this and personnel policies and it's it's advice and consent of the council. It's not a thing where you go through and select, but I can see what you're saying, Bart. I don't, I don't see, you know, I don't know. Mr. Brooks, do you have any thoughts or Stacy?
I, I mean, I think we could, we could do something. We got to be a little bit careful with a lot of that stuff because we don't divulge a lot of those things when it involves personnel issues, but I I'm sure we can draft something up. It's something that we could do outside of.
I wouldn't want to share a resume in a packet for privacy.
That's right.
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to you guys seeing a resume, but I wouldn't want it in a public meeting or in a packet where the public could see it. There's just too many.
Right. But if it's something we prepared, I think we could come up with something.
Here's, here's the thing is, is, yeah, you've got the appointing authority. But with that appointing authority comes the responsibility of communicating. And verbally communicating as we're about to vote is in my perspective, not adequate. If I had something beforehand, to what degree? You know, whether it's a resume or a bio or LinkedIn page or whatever that's on their Facebook profile or, you know, something that says this is who they are as opposed to coming in and saying, okay, that's who I appointed. Do I rubber stamp it or do I do some due diligence? That's, if I'm expected to rubber stamp something, I won't do it.
Then you vote no.
I will, and I did.
I know. That's good.
Because.
It's fine, but.
Because, because I mean, that's, I think that's, there's a courtesy there.
Did we have a vote?
No, he's talking about.
The city administrator.
Administrator.
I voted nay.
The one that we had a panel of six people on and went through and.
Well, the panel is fine, but again, I showed up and it wasn't, there wasn't even a name, an introduction. It was like, okay, you vote. And I said, no.
It's good, but yeah, it's all right. The thing is, you don't have to, well, you're not reviewing the call. I can see where you'd like to see that. What I'd suggest, if you see one like that, come in and talk Stacy and she can show you if she's been selected and show you the packet. But as far as putting it out on Facebook or on the city website for anybody who wants to see it. Unless there's a way you could write up just some one liners. But then you'd still have to be cautious because what you think might be okay may not be.
We got a judge we we did that was put in, put out and I thought that, that's, you know.
The court picks them. They pick the panel. They run the whole process. We don't even do that. All I do is.
Was that the gentleman that does the review on the anyway, that was put out. That was an appointment. Anyway, that's.
I think one of the problems we get into when we start doing this is you have the panel, you have the interviews, you've met them. You've reviewed the resumes, all the resumes. And so when you come in, if we start I'm going to say second guessing the panel, then you start saying, well, I think this other person should be, is more qualified or something, you know, it's like, is this person qualified? And if we have, maybe if we have an executive session where the person's presented and you say yes or no. the person's presented and you say yes or no, it can move forward to the public, whatever. But we can just say this person's presented, but I, I, I don't think we get into second guessing the four-person panel. I mean, Stacy went through the resume, I'm assuming this is the way it works pretty much everywhere, but you get the, you collect the twenty or so resumes. You pick the seven that are interviewed based on your credentials. So then you bring it forth to the panel and then the panel says, well, we picked these people and, you know, and, and I mean, you can present it in an executive session, say, we're gonna talk about the individual, right? And say, this is the person we're talking, this is the person we're selecting and this is why. But as opposed to stacking them, racking and stacking the twenty, you know, we, we could get into the, why did you pick the seven over the twenty and things like that. I don't think we should get into that. But I think in an executive session would be quick and easy as an introduction, this person is qualified, this is why we selected him, type of thing.
Any thoughts, Mr. Brooks?
Well, it's, it's the old age-old chicken and the egg thing, you know, because it happens even on the national level. The appointment in, in Riverdale is made by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. Nobody's ever defined what advice and consent is, you know? And so that's the problem we're faced with is how deeply do we get into it? I mean, we can discuss it, you know, administratively, and if you guys want to go deeper on that, we probably should get it on an agenda and we can, we can beat it up there if you didn't like what we came up with administratively. But like I said, the appointment is the mayor and it's, you know, whether or not you guys want to approve it or not. But how deeply we get into that, I, I don't know. It's, it's never been decided. I mean, we, we see those fights on the national level as well as the local level, so.
You wanna see those on the planning commission too?
Uh, I'd like to have a name. Now, by and large, for the planning commission, I, I know them. But the point, it, it, what Alan is saying is, is going way over the top, but the point I'm saying, it'd be nice to have, I mean, if you want a rubber stamp, city council, do what was done in the past.
Isn't rubber stamp.
It's, it's like.
You got a whole group of people that's interviewed these people.
I don't know anything about.
Trust, okay?
Uh, okay, you want a rubber stamp, because, uh, based on.
I'll give you an example after the meeting and you, give you something else to think about, okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
I know you're still mad at me. It has been, you haven't spoken to me since, that, since he was hired, okay?
Because you wouldn't even give us the name. And, 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 I mean, here it was. And you expect a, a, you expect us just to approve it because somebody appointed. Well, I, you know what, a little, and like I, I mentioned in the letter, my wife happened to have an interaction with the crossing yard, who was a new animal control, and she gave my wife more information about the, the hire than I knew.
Well, that's good.
Well, you know, it's my decision and I said no, and it only takes three council members to remove them. And I'm one. I mean, a li- little information goes a long way. And to expect to blindly rubber stamp is, I, I won't do it.
That's fine, you don't have to. Nobody expects you to. If you know something about the individual or.
How am I supposed to know if I don't even have a name?
All right, let me ask you this then, uh, it's talked about in the staff, they can, uh, talk, talk about this and make a decision how to, uh, approach this, whether put on agenda. How many of the council members, uh, we have a consensus on putting this on a future agenda?
What exactly are we putting on the agenda? I mean, are we coming up with a full process to solve the national emergency of appointments or something or? How long you worked here, Bill?
Since November.
All I'm saying is a little information on an appointment of who they are and why they're qualified to get this goes a long ways for my, for me.
Well, have the staff kick it around a little bit, see if there's any options. I think most people are pretty satisfied with.
And that's fine.
How we've done it for the last umpteen years, so. Uh, it's done that way before I ever came here, so it's nothing new. It's how we always did it. For twelve years I've been on the council and as mayor. So we've had one descending vote. Excuse me?
Is it, that's not, that's not true. When Amber Herrick was hired, there was all the pa, all the resumes were given to the council. But anyway, I, I mean, if there's something presented to the council, I, I don't, I don't want.
Yeah, I don't, I remember that. Yeah, we did have a meeting. I don't, what was it in? Was it the special meeting? I don't.
It was, yeah, it was, it was a special meeting because they had interviewed and hired what we felt was someone's friend. And, uh, when they gave us the resumes, the recorder that was actually chosen was credentials were looked at, the spoke five languages and something like that. And, and we were like, why, why this person over this person? And they said, well, so-and-so knows so-and-so.
That was because it was questioned, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still, I, I think if there's, if there's a way to do it, like an executive session to, to present, I, I definitely don't think we get into the it, it's like we don't get into any other department and say, you guys looking to hire this person, but it is to advise and consent. And it's tough to, I mean, Bart and I don't agree very often, but to have, to be able to advise and consent. You know, we're, we are being presented tonight to consent, but there's no way to advise. And so I, I think just having a quick meeting and saying, this is why we, we interview this person, we like this person, this is why. Here's a quick look at the resume. Do you have any objections? Because I, I think, you know, the only thing that surprised me about Bill after looking at his credentials, because I, I mean, I was in the same boat as Bart and was, he's taller than I thought he was. He looked shorter on Zoom. But, but the, the thing was, to, to be able to just say, hey, this is why we're picking it. And it's like, well, you know, in that one that we were talking about where the person's friends, I mean, it, it was literally somebody's friends was their mother or, or something like that. And so, and we, and, and I think you and I both agreed. Because I remember you knew.
I think we did, yeah, I knew.
I think to have just a quick meeting and saying, hey, this is who, not, not the group, we're not looking at the group, we're not saying, you know, Mike, what'd you think? You know, Stacy, what did you think? This is the person that was picked. Take a look at it and if they're, you know, if we have somebody that's got the ability to look at their criminal record or something and they want to do that, that but just saying, this is who we picked and this is why. And then we can advise and consent, so. And it should be pretty quick. I mean, it's a couple-minute meeting that we can say, hey, we're going into this meeting right here. We're gonna have an executive session. This is why. We'll give you five minutes to think about it and or something.
How do you undo that with all appointments?
Me? Me specifically, I, I mean, I, I, I would think, this, this is an important one. I think the city administrator is an important one. City, uh, planning commission, I mean, we're basically asking people to, to volunteer. And it's not exactly the easiest thing on the planet to get.
Unless they're not compensated for it.
Yeah.
We, uh.
Only thing I'm asking for is that some background information that makes me, gives me a warm and fuzzy as to say yes. I don't need to be a part of the interview process.
And I understand that. We're just, it's just.
Give me a reason to say yes.
One, one thing I will share, that S- Steve taught me this years ago, and I just talked to him about it the other day. Uh, when Ritter Drive was opened. The thing is, the, and, and I would, I'm just kind of addressing, if there is any ill will, hard feelings or whatever about Bill, it's, it's a, it's a vote. There's, it's, you have to have three council members or a majority. You could have two and one. But once the vote's taken, it's done. And there's, it's over. So whether we like Bill or don't like Bill, or he parts his hair on the wrong side, I don't know.
That's a thing.
But the thing is, it, it was, the advising consent was, the consent was given, it was for one. You know, he is the guy. So, you know, when you, when you take a vote on anything, you know, Ritter Drive is two-way. I drive it every day. My wife still won't, but that's her. She, she didn't get that.
I think with Bill, at least when I understood with Bill, it was more than just having one resume, it was to take a look at all of them and see who the best choice was. And I don't, I'm agree with that, so. We have a consensus then to have the city staff look into this and see personnel, city attorney and those others that are city administrator that.
Sure.
Okay, got at least three, so. Yeah, I think they're all pretty well in favor, so I want you to make that a point for the city staff, would you? Take a look at that, so. Okay.
Still have this consent item.
I know. Okay, do we have a motion to point Michelle Marigoni as city recorder?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? It's all in favor, unanimous, thank you. Sorry to push you through that, Michelle. You probably felt like you were being scrutinized the whole time, so.
Mayor? You haven't seen anything yet.
You've seen worse.
If, if you would like, we could actually appoint her tonight. I mean, that's part of a, you know, an approval process. At this point, once the council okay's it, we can do it at any time. We do it tomorrow most likely, but we need to have a notary or the recorder or a judge. Uh, we actually have a notary here tonight. If you want to do it, we could do it and she would be official tonight and we would be moving forward if you want.
You want to do that then?
So just, just, it's, it's just on the agenda to appoint her.
Right, but part of the.
Consent wasn't, isn't even on the agenda, honestly.
But it, it's not like you're taking an action. You've, you've, you've taken your action. You did what has to be done. This is something we can do anytime, whether we did it now or tomorrow, it doesn't matter. So, I mean, we could do it tonight if you want.
Now's good.
We're ready to go.
Let's do it.
That's kind of what I thought we could make it. I had Stacy get her stuff already, just in case she chose to, so.
You can't be jumping ahead of us.
I, I told her, Michelle, you better be careful, because if they denied it, all this went for naught, so.
Okay, I please state your name. Sorry. solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Utah. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Part of the reason for that, if you see I have her listed as this re- recorder on all these resolutions tonight, so now she can sign those. Initially, I had her as the acting city recorder, so just to make sure we were all official all around, I'd be comfortable with that.
That's great, thank you.
She is doing a great job, by the way. She's been fantastic. Her attitude is, and her expertise has just been a, a great asset already for the office, so we're happy to have her.
Had a quick question. I know that they, they have training for recorders, like annually. I mean, do they offer that more than annually or is there, I mean?
She has signed up for at least twenty-seven, maybe twenty-eight different, I'm kidding, that's a little bit of a stretch, but not much uh, already for, uh, different associations, groups, uh, trainings. She's sat through a lot of land use trainings already, uh, in connection with some of her other responsibilities with Mike and, and, uh, the community development, development department and her work with the planning commission. She's already passed her notary exam. Um, she's, she's just hit the ground running and, and really has, has just, it's been awesome, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Because we approved her, but I, I mean, I want her to make sure.
You're pretty awesome.
Yeah, she's pretty awesome.
She is a certified records manager already as well.
Okay.
She does have, she's got some experience under her belt.
It's, it's an important job. I mean, it's a, it's a big.
And you have to work with us, which is the hardest.
She's got experience with, is it Cassell? Is that the name of the computer program? She has had that and things.
What'd you do for the sheriff?
Um, I did a lot of things. I was, uh, a public safety office manager. I did some, I was financial manager for a while. I started in the jail, worked my way into kind of finance and some administrative side of that, as well as records manager. And I supervised all of the records.
Wow. That's impressive.
Yeah, she's awesome.
She's good.
She's pretty awesome.
Did you work with Ebert's wife?
I did.
Oh, that's how you guys got.
Alan.
How you know?
Don't put that in the record.
Don't put that in the record.
Okay, move on to, uh, excuse me?
Yeah, she's telling me it's on YouTube.
Oh, is it?
YouTube followers, the two of you that are.
Broadcast right now. Howdy.
Those go in Flori Fleming, so.
Move on to action item one, uh, motion to approve resolution amending personnel policies handbook. For policies six through seven, conflict of interest. Six through eight, reporting fraud or abuse. Six through nine, cash receipting and deposits. Nine through twelve, paid holidays. Nine through nineteen, work from home telecommuting. Fifteen dash two, communicable diseases, Mrs. Como.
Okay, so we've got a whole slew of policies here. Um, I'm just gonna start with the, uh, risk management ones first. I don't know if you guys remember, it would have been in your last pack at the end of June, but there was a fraud risk assessment in there. It's in there every year. So these first policies, the conflict of interest, the reporting fraud or abuse, the cash receipting and deposits are all policies that, um, we are implementing in order to meet the fraud risk assessment. There are policies that the state auditor's office wanted us to have in place. They were actually templates that I got off the state auditor's website. And I revised them to fit us. Um, they were written for much larger agencies than us, so. But they work, they were revised to fit us, so. Um, the next policy I have on there is the paid holidays to recognize Juneteenth. Um, after the federal government came out and recognized that as a new federal holiday, I kind of, I actually had a few employees inquire about it. Um, and I kind of wanted to jump on and be one of the first local governments to show our support for that. Um, there are a couple counties and a couple other local governments that have already approved it, but I'd rather be a leader than a follower, so I wanted to throw that one on there for your approval. Um, the next one is the work from home or the telecommuting policy. We did that, we've been doing that. Um, we just all actually came back into the office today. Um, we are all officially here again. We probably should have implemented a policy while we were telecommuting, but we didn't. Um, so this policy is kind of in response to COVID and also to offer, um, a flexible work option for some employees that would be able to tell work, um, with approval from their department head, obviously. And then the next policy is the communicable diseases, um, and that, I just amended that to add coronavirus as a communicable disease. And then there, those other changes were some that our attorney wanted. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mrs. Como?
I had a question about the Juneteenth thing. So I think we might have more holidays than any other city if we add that versus like, I mean.
Actually, we don't.
We don't?
No. Um, we have eleven paid holidays, plus we do the birthday holiday. A lot of the other cities do like thirteen or fourteen holidays, uh, and there are some that we don't do. We don't do Columbus Day, for instance.
Is the floating one the same as Veterans Day? The, or because we have a floating one listed, I think.
That's the birthday.
That's the birthday.
Two in lieu of, according to the, the policy.
Right.
They're there, they're just taking another day.
So the Veterans Day po, so we used to do Veterans Day, but when we started doing, um, the tribute, the veterans tribute. So the Veterans Day pa, so we used to do Veterans Day, but when we started doing, um, the tribute, the veterans tribute on Veterans Day, it was easier for staff to be here in the office working. So we changed that, so we're all here in the office, and we made that, um, to where we either have the day before or the day after Christmas.
How about the local holidays, twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth is the state holiday, and that is the only holiday that we do recognize. The others are all federal holidays.
So, in the, just researching this, there's only, there's only five states that recognize this as a state holiday. Utah's not one of them, it was actually looked at and said, no. It's a day of observance and not a, not a paid holiday. Um, the federal government did do it, and I work for the federal government, so I do get it, so I understand that, but one of the things, there's a couple of things, just to bring the federal government into it, is, like, our pay scale is way lower than Riverdale City. Um, and also, um, like, the retirement, you know, like, I get four percent versus seventeen percent or something for the city, so, I mean, it's, it's tough to to have the federal government and the state and local governments, you know, like, I don't get the twenty-fourth of July off, you know, so. I, I think that Juneteenth should be a day of observance, just like it is in the state, but it shouldn't be a paid holiday. So that, that would be my position on that one. And then just to keep going on teleworking, in, in some cases, it works better, in some cases, it does not, and I, I'm, from my work, a- anybody that's in a supervisory, department head, lead position, I, I think, you know, teleworking should be something that's used very sparingly, like, extreme, like, extreme cases, case-by-case basis. I'm, I'm not a fan of, of teleworking, just from what I've seen, you know, um, this is on YouTube, and my boss is probably watching, but they're not effective when they're teleworking. Um, you know, the department heads, supervisors, leads, things like that, boots on the ground, and I think the fire department, police department, public works, so we're talking probably a, a real small number of employees that could possibly telework anyway. But, you know, it's just, people are more productive where they're at, especially when they have people to supervise, so. Um, I, I'm in favor of having the telework policy, but on an extreme basis, just case by case, not, you know, hey, the cable guy's coming from noon to four, so I'm gonna telework today. Or, that's, I don't think that counts, you know.
We recognize that, and we did discuss that as we did the policy.
Well, if we would have talked about it, we would have had the information. But it, it's just, if, if it's on an extreme case, and, and very rarely for supervisors, managers kind of thing, because it just, it just um, lowers their efficiency in the things that they're doing, so.
One area where it is actually a huge, um, deal for the city is, we're very small staff here. Um, we do, we wear a lot of hats, I wear a lot of hats. If I, let's say I had to have surgery or something, and my doctor said, you can't go back to work for four weeks. I do payroll, and I am the only one that does payroll. So it would be extremely helpful if I could telework for those four weeks while my doctor said that I can't come to work, so I could do payroll. Um.
And, and I think that's a great example of an extreme case, you know? But, but when it's like, hey, payroll's every Friday, or every other Friday, or something like that, so you're like, hey, I'm gonna do payroll from home, because it just works for me, because I'm not interrupted or something, I just, I think that's extreme, and
Right.
you know, people see that as an opportunity saying, you know, and I don't want to pick on you, but somebody, one of the employees can use that, and they start teleworking every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or something, because I have that. You know, people are fighting for that, just because they're doing other things, and, and they tell you, oh yeah, it was great, I mow my lawn, and whatever, and it's like, you what? You know, so, anyway, that's.
And I hope you looked at the teleworking agreement that was attached to the policy too, because it is gonna be, the department head would be the person that would have to make the decision, the approval, and it's, that form wants some very detailed information, the days of the week, the hours you're working, the a- and hopefully the department heads will, um, take that into consideration and make sure that they're having the people here to service the community when it's necessary. A- and I think they will, I think that they can be trusted to do that.
I would note for the record that America First, on the other hand, Ellen, has had great success with telework, we've had everybody teleworking during COVID. Um, that has necessitated a lot of things that track and measure the work that gets performed, and and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to allow teleworking in the areas where it makes the most sense, and that, I think, helps us avoid building new facilities to account for the new employees that would be required for our growth, so that's ongoingly, we're still, we're still pretty much a hundred percent telecommuting. But as we bring people back, we'll be, uh, allowing uh, folks that have proved themselves as successful teleworkers to stay. And, you know, they have, have to meet certain requirements, they have to be in a locked room, and they have to have the proper internet speed, and then they, they're, usually the computer systems that they use to do their work are measured, and their supervisor can track that, and I think that, uh, when you're talking about management layer people, that's a little bit different, you can't really manage people very effectively if you're not there, but in general, it's worked out really well for America First, so if Riverdale can do that in a, in a way that, that makes sense, that can manage and track resources appropriately, and make sure you're getting the work done, then I would, I would take the opposite stand of Ellen, sorry.
I don't think you would, because, I mean, I understand you're saying that, but if you do a hundred employees, how many employees are with Riverdale?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven. Um, take out the fire department, police, they're probably not.
Yeah.
Public Works isn't gonna do it, I mean, your-
Rec Center probably can't do it much either.
No.
You're, you're talking seven, a hundred that can, seven, I mean, I'm just throwing a number out there, YouTube.
I agree that it's a limited in Riverdale.
It's real limited.
But where you can leverage it.
If you take out managers, supervisors, and leads, it, it really takes it down to almost nil. But, you know, people get to the point where they're allowing friends, and I think America First, and I'm just guessing here, because I don't know your business, but people that are right in with the, the public, which is that's what the city does, is dealing with public issues, but anyway, I mean, your point's taken, for sure.
When they're on the phone, they're all teleworking, but I, I guess my point really is I trust the managers in the city to effectively administer this policy and, and, and make sure that you're getting the work out of the employees that you're allowed to do this.
Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm in a, I'm out on base, and, and I'm in a, in an environment that can, can work at home. And, uh, as we have, we are returning, the, the question now was, is we don't need such a big footprint of all these cubicles and all these offices for our, 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 our flight there on, on base, and it's like, okay, if you want to work at home, okay, you're gonna do a desk share, there can be five people on that desk, and boy, the houls went up, because people want the latitude to show up, wouldn't, you know, do their two hours, couple, three times a week to get, you know, because the biggest complaint is, is printer ink is expensive, and, you know, you have to print at home, and, but, but the point of it is, is, is the, things kind of resolve themselves, because like it's mentioned, oh, there's not that many in the city that lend themselves to off-site work. Um, the majority of the employees are onsite because of what, what is being done. And so, you know, i- in, in, in some regards, it can be beneficial, because if we're busting at the seams with our office space, hey, that can be an option. And so, you know, I, you, you let the discretion go to the managers as to what can happen as to, I mean, there's a place for it. Excuse me.
I feel like it could also be a good, um, hiring, attract, retain employee tool. Obviously, not in all positions, but in some positions. Um, when I was talking to Bill about this, I brought up the finance director position. That's obviously a position that could probably telework. And in the future, we could have an applicant that, hey, I'm considering a job between Layton City and Riverdale City, Layton City will allow me to telework one day a week, what will Riverdale do? You know?
You alright, Cody? What are you doing?
Nothing.
Don't go anywhere.
Sitting in this hall.
Guy two, isn't he?
He is.
Okay, so that brings up the issue, if you're gonna allow telework, do they have to be in the area, or can we hire somebody in Texas who, you know, because that's, that's the thing now, so, and I don't see that addressed. If you're offsite, that's one thing, out of the area is totally different, and I don't.
Well, we do, that policy does state that you have to, um, have worked for the city for at least one year in office before you can even be eligible to telework, so.
But telework is, is lo, still, you're still local in commuting diff, di, uh, commuting distance.
So I would think that the department head would have the latitude to approve that if appropriate. I don't, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate in any circumstance, but.
Using America First is another example, it started with great employees that needed to move, and were going to quit, and the question that, you know, you, with telework caused by COVID, you really have your workstation in front of you at home, there's nothing about being in the office that gets you any more connectivity or any more ability to do your work with these jobs, and so we've let people move and continue to work for us, and they're productive, and, and it's working out great, but the policy says if you lose your internet, you gotta come in, they're exempted from that policy.
Right, and our policy actually says that as well. So if somebody's internet, this policy does actually state that if you're at home working and your internet goes out and it hasn't returned within thirty minutes, you have to come into the office and finish your day. So, I guess it wouldn't be very convenient if you lived in Texas.
If you love somebody well enough that you want to keep them, even if they move to Texas, and they can do their job.
And that's true, and we could always, um, revise the policy later if we had a department head who had an employee that was, you know, came forward and said, hey, I want to move. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if that's feasible, but it could be, I guess.
One other thing that Stacy hasn't mentioned is there is workers' comp issues associated with having people telecommute, and so that's part of the reason we wanted a policy, is because historically, we've had some necessities where people have had surgeries or various things, and they're the only person who does their job, and we've needed them to do utility billing, or whatever the case may be. And so we wanted it formally in policy, so that we were covered, and that we kind of had our i's dotted and t's crossed with some of those workers' comp things. So this policy is a lot deeper than maybe it looks like on the surface, it's not just, hey, I want to work from home. It's kind of making sure that we have it as a tool, and all the i's and t's are dotted from the city, and, and those kind of things too.
And that is why the policy talks about a designated workspace, and it also talks about the city can come and inspect that workspace, just in case we did have an incident where there was an injury or something.
Go ahead, Mr. Arnold.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution, as stated within the packet, with the exception of the Juneteenth uh, paid holiday, and make it a day of observance, as it's stated within the state of Utah.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Maragonia, would you, uh, poll the council?
I did have some discussion.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I, I wouldn't be opposed to revisiting the Juneteenth thing down the road. Um, but, but for now, I think what the, what the state's doing, you know, I mean, don't be afraid to bring it back to us, but for now, what the state's doing, I think, I think they're probably on a, on a good path for it, so. I agree with that, congratulations on trying to get ahead of it.
I agree also.
That's okay.
Poll the council, please, on the resolution. It doesn't-
Councilmember Ellis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sears.
Aye.
Thank you.
unanimous in favor, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Como. Move on next, uh, motion to approve a new liquor license for, uh, De Dong Yi, hope I pronounced that pretty close. Pretty good. Uh, owner of Boathouse Cajun Restaurant, uh, Michelle, do you have comments on this?
Um, I just wanted to let you know, they've already been granted a business license, they've gone through everything they need to for that. Um, they applied for the local consent on the liquor license, so that they can get their state approval, get their state license. The police department has done the background check for that and didn't find any reason to deny it, and yeah, everything is in order, so.
Hey, any questions, Mr. Mitchell?
I had a question, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but Mr. Eggit might be able to, um, is this the place over by Five Below? Um,
It is.
Okay, and, and if I remember right, did they have some signage up kind of before they were supposed to, and was there some confusion on?
There have been some issues, but they've all been resolved.
They've been resolved, okay. Um, I would just encourage them to make sure that they read everything, uh, especially in regards to the liquor laws, uh, and follow them very closely, we don't want any confusion or any sort of problems with that at all, um, it's, it's not something to mess around with, so. Um, we don't, we don't want any more confusion.
So are they currently open, or are they, okay, is it a more of a buffet, or is it a restaurant-type thing, or? I know there's several buffets open.
Not open yet.
I guess they're not open yet, but, but yeah. And, I don't know if you'd want to come and explain your restaurant concept, maybe you'd like to.
So, our restaurant gonna serving the boil seafood and just some beverage, just, um, maybe some deep fry stuff. That's it, that's the only thing we served.
And that's sit-down at tables and order for a menu?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, so what's the style of food, is this, is it from a certain country, or?
Um, no, I think the, this is original from like a French, something, it's original, like a boil seafood. I think it's from the French, not from our country.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Arnold.
Move to approve new liquor license for De Dong Yi, owner of Boathouse Cajun Restaurant.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor, thank you, thank you for waiting. Know you had to sit and wait for a while, but thank you, and, uh, we wish you the best with your new restaurant, hope it goes well for you. Successful, thank you. Okay, move on to, uh, action item number three, consideration of resolution, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. This is toward the bid to Paradise Contractors Incorporated for the fire station kitchen remodel, Chief Sholly.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, so this is the kitchen remodel, the remodel didn't happen during the last fire station remodel. So there's some water damage with some mold and a couple things, and the cabinets we'd like to address, as well some of the lighting, so. And you can see the, in the packet, the documentation showing the separation between the bids, so if you have any questions for me, I can-
For any reason that didn't happen, last remodel?
Nope, I don't know.
You don't know, you weren't here?
I wasn't here.
Not my fault.
No, I was not here as a year before I came.
In the proposal.
Just was not in the original proposal for that remodel, so.
I remember the, uh, I was, happened to be here when that was presented, uh, probably ten years ago. And one of the big things that was put in was the new alarm that, uh, because the old alarm, when it wakes you up, could actually cause a heart attack, I thought that was very interesting, and so they had a you know, had a new alarm that would escalate in, in, in decimals, and-
We've got lighter over the years, softer.
Yeah, and so it starts real soft, and then works up, rather than that blast that, anyway, I, that was the one to take- I, that was the one takeaway that I heard from that presentation.
Feels like a cardiac thump.
You gonna have us over for a meal? I want you to get your kitchen.
Sure. Like I said, Saturday was.
I don't take gratuities from the department.
Internal gratuities are different.
Any other questions?
Okay. Do we, certification, because this is a bid and it's not in the statement that we do, do we need to put the dollar amount because if it's twenty-eight thousand, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, I would include that in your motion, yeah.
You have that figure out?
Yeah.
Chief has.
There's a figure on there too, because there's cabinet prices have come up since the bids. So I think in the packet, what I put in there was not to exceed thirty-five and after twenty-eight, they had to explain the reason going beyond twenty-eight. But because of lumber prices and cabinet prices and what we've seen with construction, I believe I put that thirty-five in there as a acceptable level of go-to with documentation from the contractor.
Okay. That's good. Go ahead, Mr. Arnold.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one toward the bid to Paradise Contractors, Inc. For the fire station kitchen remodel in a amount of thirty-five thou- not to exceed thirty-five thousand without explanation uh due to the costs of materials.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I had just a quick question. I, uh, it, it doesn't say in the resolution anything about thirty-five thousand. Does it need to say that in the actual resolution? Or can we change that verbally?
Yeah, ju- just do that verbally per interlineation and then before the mayor signs it, I'll, I'll adjust it to this.
He did it verbally.
Make the motion verbally and then I'll, I'll make the written adjustment.
Did you hear what he made?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, but it's just in the resolution, the whole entire one on the thing. It does not say anything about, but his is good enough then.
Yeah, we'll do the verbal motion. We, we have to have something to present to the public when we come to the meeting, but that doesn't say you can't. You can always amend those things here, so you're okay.
And by the way, it does say thirty-five right there. In the resolution?
Yeah, right below the, the prices, Braden, in the paragraph after that.
Turn this summary. Is it in the resolution?
Oh, it's in the summary. It's not in the resolution though, yep.
Res- resolution says twenty-eight because that's the information I had when I typed this up, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Marigoni, would you poll the council on the resolution, please?
On the resolution twenty twenty-one, actually twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one still.
Twenty-two is coming, right?
That's the towing one.
Assuming it's not, it's not strike three.
Oh, wait, we're gonna help her through this.
Hi, Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis.
Aye. Arnold.
Arnold.
Arnold. Councilmember Arnold.
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on to action item number four, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two to prove an extension of an agreement with Stoffer's Towing for non-consent vehicle towing services within Riverdale City. Chief Brinkman.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our extension of our towing contract. This is for just non-consent tow's, so. If someone's car breaks down or they get in an accident, they can still request any towing company that they want. It's just all non-consent towing and we've had this in place for a while and it does allow for two-year extensions. I'll just say that we've had phenomenal service. We have Chuck Hadley from Stoffer's Towing that's here if you have any questions for him. Um, but they've given us great service. I don't get any complaints um about the towing that they provide. So, and, and they've done some great things in the community service oriented things as well as, as you're aware, so. They're, um, they've just been, we've had a great partnership with them for a long time and, and we want to continue to um have this contract in place. They're, they're always responsive. They show up quick and they have great drivers and every, everything always works out great. I don't get any complaints, so. I don't know if anyone has questions or, or if you wanted to have anything to add or.
I've just been a pleasure.
I'd, I'll just mention one thing. Chuck, we, we know your service has been awesome. I saw an accident yesterday down Parker Drive and I followed the, actually followed the ambulance there and and got down to the end of Parker Drive, almost Thirty First Street, and here comes Stoffer's truck just roaring and I'm not sure the wheels have quit turning on the cars that had crashed, but and, and the effort you did after the windstorm and pulled all those stumps out for those people. That was an awesome thing, great gesture uh to the community and we appreciate your willingness and your company's willingness to do that. You save people a lot of money and a lot of trouble, so we thank you for that, so.
Well, we were proud to have done it. We'd do it again in a heartbeat.
I know you would and we, that's why we appreciate you so much, so. Pass that back. We do appreciate Stoffer's Towing, so.
I'm confused as to who the ambulance chaser is. Is that the mayor or is that the towing company?
Probably a little above, yeah.
We know he is, but.
And it was actually, it was actually on Saturday, I think. It was, it wasn't yesterday. No, yesterday was Monday, yeah. It was yesterday afternoon, yeah. No, it wasn't. It was actually chasing something to eat, so. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
How many non-consent tow's do we do in a year, do you think? Just a rough? I, I don't have that. No idea. Hundreds, thousands. It just varies so much based upon how many DUIs, how many, you know, registration viola- and all sorts of different things. Safe keeps if we arrest someone, it's, I don't, I don't know what that number is. I, I used them on Thursday, last week on Thursday and they, the, the driver that helped me said this was his eighth call, his eighth call in Riverdale, so. He's like, I'm busy in Riverdale, so, today, that day. So, I mean, he might not ever touch Riverdale on Wednesday, but Thursday he was busy, so. That's a pretty busy day.
That's great. You have a motion, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Arnold, go ahead.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, even though stated dash twenty in the packet for the verbal motion to approve the extension of an agreement with Stoffer's Towing.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Marigoni, would you poll the council on resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two?
For real this time, twenty-two. Councilmember Biden.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis.
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you and thank you, Chuck, for being here and again, we appreciate your fine service. Uh, move on to action item number five, a discussion regarding water restrictions. Uh, we talked about this a little bit in the work session. I think the idea that we got from the work session is we'd continue with the water restriction, water restrictions that we've put in force. This information is on the website for anybody that's tuning in that's not aware of what they are. It's all, it's on our city website, Riverdale, www.riverdellcity.com. It's also on our city Facebook page, Riverdale City, Utah. Uh, with the water restrictions, uh, information will also be coming out with a u- utility bill in the the next couple of days, so. Think, is there any other discussion on this or? Okay, we're okay with the way we are. Uh, discussion regarding fireworks. Uh, we talked about fireworks and uh, as of right now, with our discussion, we'll just continue with the current policy. Uh, we'll go ahead and I think everybody's been notified that's in the restricted areas. I think we're good, don't you, chief, so?
Yeah, I was gonna give you just a couple of things that happened with the weekend, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
As part of that. Uh, so we, like I said, we passed out about three hundred flyers, but uh what we did over the weekend, me and between myself and Randy had about thirty-two hours of patrolling between Friday night and Sunday. Um, within that, we confiscated one hundred and fifty-two M ninety-eight uh firecrackers or you guys are familiar with the M eighties. They're just a little bit smaller than that. We also confiscated three hundred and fifty-two baller rockets, twelve mortars, seven packs of firecrackers, and then we handed out six warnings and one citation. But overall, we saw a lot less discharge of fireworks, especially the first two days before the fourth. The fourth is probably half of what it was last year and last night was very minimal. And that's the first time working in Riverdale I've not had a brush fire in Riverdale. So it was very, very nice. The rain helped, but.
I think your campaign was very effective.
Me too.
It was. It was great, great work.
Somebody said that you were patrolling the apartments or something, watching for possible fraud?
Yeah, so the night of the fireworks.
Right.
Yeah, we had some fallout that went over towards the apartment, so we actually got on the roof and expect, inspected the roof and then also watered down the trees afterwards and made sure all the residents were okay.
And the residents were really appreciative of what you did, so, great job.
It was a little bit of a, for a minute. Don't like to see fire land on top of farmers, apartment complexes.
You folks always go the extra mile, everything you do.
It was a good night. No one got hurt. We did have one difficulty breathing in the park, which resulted after fireworks, so take that for what it is. I don't know if it was caused by the fireworks or medical, but.
Literally took their breath away.
Literally took their breath away. I believe we'll keep using this pyro that we had last night. He did a phenomenal job. So Rich is, Rich needs to have some huge kudos over this one. He, he found this gentleman and did a great job, so.
One thing, um, this is the first time I've noticed, maybe you've had it up before. On the backside, on the east side of your fire station, you had a big banner that said first aid.
Yeah.
And I have not seen that before. And for the parkgoers on Monday, that was, I thought that was very good PR. Not just PR, but as far as letting people know what you were there for. Now, is that new? Is that?
No, we've had that before. The health department um requires that we have that stand. Uh, this is the first year that we've had that larger sign.
Yeah, well, that was, caught, caught a lot of people's attention.
So that's all I've got to report on the fourth and the wonderful weekend, so.
All right, thanks again, chief. Any other discussion on fireworks? Okay, move on next to action item number seven. Uh, discussion regarding sale of property on Ritter Drive. Uh, Mr. Kobe.
Uh, we discussed this in the work session. Um, I don't have much more to add unless there is some other thought or discussion that the council would like to bring forward.
Do you want a consensus?
I think we, I think we know where we're going with this, so unless there's any other thoughts or concerns, uh, we'll just proceed in the usual manner.
I, I do have one comment. And when this originally came up, Mrs. Fleming submitted a letter asking this to be donated. And um, I don't, I guess it concerned me because, just because of the cost involved to purchase that and we're in a situation where we're on the verge of raising taxes. The rev- the euphemistic term, of course, is revenue enhancing.
Right.
And so it, to do anything other than to sell it for, to defer the cost is, would be, but I don't know, how, what kind of a, a request like that, how much consideration? What would it take for that to be enacted upon, I guess, is, is, because that, that would be very concerning um to, to, to donate that as opposed to sell it to defer the cost with all the stuff that's going on um and, and what it would potentially bring.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Steve?
I, I actually pulled up the code sections on that in case you had some questions, but I didn't look at that specific thing, but in the back of my mind, I don't know that we can even do that, to be honest with you. We can donate things to other agencies, government agencies, but I don't know that where it's a private one like that, that we can even do that legally. And then there's also restrictions. I'm not sure how big that piece of property is and stuff, because there's certain things we have to do if it's above uh a half acre and worth so much money and stuff, so I'm not even sure we can do that, to be honest with you. It's kind of the bottom line. I have to research it again to be sure, but I think it would be a really messy situation to dive into.
Steve?
Yeah.
Would you mention what the city policy, I don't believe it's written anywhere, but the policy over the years, what the policy is on donating to charitable organizations?
Well, uh, that's one of the things we have to be careful with. We have to, those things, we have to do that through a public process. We have to give notification and jump through all those hoops, just like we would a budgetary item for that reason. There was a time when we, a lot of times we'd have, like, the Bonneville groups would come in and ask us for money and we did that routinely, but that's contrary to what the law allows us to do. We have to go through a public process and have hearings on it and everything, just like we would a budget process, so. This would be no different, but I, like I said, I don't know if we can do it depending on the size and the value of that piece. It may be prohibitive to even consider it, to be honest with you. And it falls back that same thing. And, and the other thing I got thinking about on our code, just today as I'm reading through this, um, it, it's kind of funny. Our, our code section talks about when we bid things, um, what we have to do when we jump through all these ho- hoops, but when we're selling or leasing them, it's not real clear on that, but it says you have to follow the same procedures as you would when you bid them. Well, my concern about that is in the bidding process, we go for the lowest responsible bidder. If we were selling something, we certainly don't want to take the lowest responsible purchaser kind of thing, because then we're gonna take it into shorts, so. I'm gonna have to come up with an amendment on that because it's not clear in our code. That could cause us some issues there.
Could we go with the lowest commission real estate agent?
Well, and that's kind of the whole thing. We, I, I, my thought is, is the language is, the bottom line is, we gotta do what's in the best interest of the city. And so I'll, I'll insert something to that degree so that we don't get stuck on that. If somebody called us on it, we could be in kind of a bind as it's currently written, but um that might be even in next meeting if I can get that done quick. I just thought it out this afternoon as I'm reading this going, man, I don't like that.
That's all if we put it out for bid, but in this case, we're gonna get a real estate agent, right?
Most likely. Again, it depends on how much it's worth and stuff and the size of it. There are certain things you have to do depending on what they are. Um, the only thing, everything has a, a process and if it's under a hundred dollars, you guys don't even get involved in it. Let's just build decides on that. But between a hundred and twenty-five thousand, there are certain things we do, and twenty-five thousand and above, there are certain things we do, so. We, we'll, we'll have to get that appraised and, and find out what the value on it is, so, before we can even move forward, so. With the prices today, the value on that thing could have tripled, you know, for all we know, on the value of that land, yeah.
I think too, the only, uh, I know we've donated to uh Bonneville High, but the only thing I remember is the graduation party at the end of the year and that's in the budget.
Right, and that's the key. We, we weren't putting it in the budget before. We just did it spur of the moment and that, that's illegal. We shouldn't have been doing that. But we, we changed all that since. We actually make that part of it so that it's the public process, but.
I know we've been very careful over the years far as donating and there's been some really worthwhile organizations come in that you'd like to, but if you, if you do for one, you pretty well have to. And then it's been mentioned it's taxpayers' money and if you, like you say, if you try to increase revenue and you turn around and giving it away, somebody, you just, the key is being fair, I think, to everyone, so. Do we need a consensus on this as far as?
I think we're clear.
We're okay? Good to go? Okay. All right, any discretionary for this?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Anyway, the, the two individuals that approached me and of what, how they could do, resolve it and I invited them to come to the open mic night and present just because all the departments are here and, and because I'm not sure if, if it falls under one department head or whatever. And of course, the.
Department head or whatever. And of course, the the. The semi trucks being parked there and then with it being hot, they turn on their generator to keep the air conditioning going in their truck.
Where is that?
What?
Sorry, where is that?
In the truck.
No, you're they're parked somewhere. I don't know where they're parked. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's it's um.
It's north of At Home, right by the wall.
At Home, um northwest corner.
Okay, thank you.
There's a wall there, about a ten, twelve foot cinder block, and they pull up against the wall. And then when they get up in the night, of course, they uh. Do their business and and but anyway, the noise is is one thing, the. The hygiene issue is is quite another. And I'm I'm not sure where that would fall. Uh that's that was a concern. The other issue that was brought up was. Across the street is the home of Edith Van Fleet. Did I say the name right?
She's not married.
Oh, she, yeah, whatever.
What her name name?
I don't know, but she has a very large chicken. Uh in the back. Now, the chickens aren't the issue. It's the roosters. And there's no reason why you want roosters unless it's to annoy everybody around you. And that's what they're doing, and there's multiple of them. And it's like. In the and as I understand, the nuisance ordinance is kind of, yeah. And that's where this falls under is in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, there was. The city tried to pass the ordinance for chickens, and it was not passed because it could be regulated by the nuisance ordinance. And and I don't know if there's ever been an issue with chickens. It's roosters. And boy, are they annoying. Anyway, they're asking for something to be done.
Where's that address at, Mark?
If you will.
Edith Gibbs, isn't that Gibbs?
You know what? I'm gonna have to email you.
Okay.
Because.
Just go over by Aaron's and about five o'clock in the morning.
No, literally, if you stand across the street, you will hear them.
I've got the address. I'll get it to you after if you want.
Yeah, it's the it's the second house. Well, there's three houses. It's the one in the middle.
You know, we had this uh this issue. We'd done the chickens before and uh. Uh code enforcement was involved. They got the TV stations involved in it. We went through all that and. The last I remembered is she recognized that there was a problem particularly with the roosters. And they were going to, I don't remember if they said they were gonna get a new home for some of them, but. Anyway, she knew of the problem and she recognized it, and I would. I would think code enforcement just needs to get back involved. Because those residents really live just almost across the street in that. Other subdivision and they should they should do something there. They they treat them as probably like you have like children pretty well, and they mean a lot to them, but there's uh. Uh they're still they're still disturbing people and it should be. On the the truck thing, Becky's talked to me before on that. I've usually referred it to either code enforcement or police and. And uh what's going on there. I wondered if they could, if we could get the uh. Property manager there to put some no parking signs on that wall. That, you know, that'd probably be the the fix-all, but. Uh anyway, whatever they've done in the past, when I've brought the attention of the. City administrator, they've usually taken care of it, so, Chief.
And I I would just say that um they can always call regardless of what time of night it is, and our guys will go over and. Sometimes they can't always make contact.
Is it dispatch?
Yep, just call the non-emergency dispatch number. And um they'll go over and and they'll try and make contact and see if they can have a move, you know. There's obviously concerns why they have to run those refrigeration units, but I don't see any reason why they couldn't move into the.
The heat, you know, where they sleep, they turn on, it's inside the cab. Uh air conditioning.
Sure. And well, and we've had them on the trailers too. They'll run the they'll run the refrigeration on the trailers, so. I don't see any reason why they can't move to the the front parking lot or something while they're waiting, and then as far as, you know, public urination, that. That's a whole other issue that's illegal, but and then with the uh roosters, they can contact our animal control and she can.
He I think um mayor probably been contacted. They. They've been contacted. They went there and it's it's kind of turned into a little bit of a fiasco. Because there was an interview done on a television station and she said, well, we're grandfathered. There wasn't anything to the ordinance, and there was never an ordinance passed.
So the difficult thing with a lot of these types of calls is if we don't have a complainant. Who's willing to be a complainant and go to court, it makes these noise type situations very difficult.
Yes, yes.
So sometimes people get frustrated, why can't you put an end to this? Well. We need someone to step up with plate and be willing to go to court and testify as to what you're dealing with and and. Bring some of that evidence, so sometimes that complicates things, but. They can contact our animal control. We can work with uh community development with maybe talking to the the um. Property owners there with the trucks and see if maybe some signage, maybe contacting them and tell them, hey, you're not allowed to park back there. But if it's going on during the night, just tell the residents, whoever's talking with you, to give us a call. Call dispatch and we'll just go over and try and at least take care of it right then.
Chief, do you know if there are trucks that are waiting to unload or they just park there at night along the wall?
I'm not sure. I mean, in my experience in the past, because this has been happening since I was out on the road, it's usually they're they're waiting to do some sort of.
They just park along the wall waiting for morning, huh?
We've had, there's been some issues before where we actually had some residents that live nearby that were parking back there and had to run refrigeration and that sort of thing, so that's also been. An issue, so.
You know, I I've noticed, and again, it falls back into, I don't know what the property owners are allowing. No, it's a rumor, and I don't know if this is true, that Walmart actually. Almost encourages it, a motorhome to, you know, if you want to park over, not a long term, but overnight or a truck.
They did at one time as a company. Um it turned into a big fiasco and we kind of put some pressure on them, so if you go over there, you'll notice on their. On their light posts that they have signage all over and they do not allow.
But in front of of. At Home, out in the middle, I've noticed trucks out there in the afternoon and different things, because now I. Since I've been made aware of it, I kind of drive through the parking lot. I'm really home. And I'm and I'm seeing construction vehicles parked there. Like dump trucks, maybe they're being used up on the freeway. I don't know. But there, you know, there's a lot of trucks that are foreign to that shopping experience.
Right. And like I say, we would leave that up to the property owner to give us a call and let us look into it, because as as you're out patrolling, you don't know what belongs and what doesn't in a parking lot. Could be someone's doing construction somewhere and using that, so it's hard for an officer to determine that, so they would need to just call us and we'd look into.
I mean, you're you're going over nicely because it's private property. There's, I mean, you can't say move. You say, would you please move?
Yeah.
Kind of stuff, so I mean, it's it's not like you can say.
He walks over with his hand on his gun.
There's not.
Would you please move?
Yeah, I mean, the parking stuff's difficult to enforce, you know. I mean, if the property owner says, hey, we don't want them there, then yeah, then it makes a lot easier.
You just call Stoffers. You get a non-consent to want a semi. That's probably expensive for a semi. That'd bring in a lot of revenue.
Would be a non-consent.
Especially if they're asleep in the cab, you know?
There, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think there's a new. State ordinance or law on what they considered private property towing. And this is something maybe the police department will look into. I know down in Salt Lake, Ken Garf has a big problem with parking. So they put up signs and stickers, and they prefer stickers on a car that says, if your vehicle has been here X amount of time. It will be towed. And after it will say four hours. And come at four oh five, they're calling tow trucks. So if these are parked on private property, there is an ordinance through the state. I'm not a hundred percent sure where it is or what it is. But it's something that Chief Brinkman could maybe check on too. And the pro it's up to the property owner to call. It's not the police department, but the property owner, call whoever, I'm sorry, but whomever. And the property owner is not responsible for the tow bill. It would be the owner of the car. So there's no cost to the property owner. If that helps out at all. Okay?
Okay, so for. The chickens, uh they should call. Animal Control and also be willing to sign a complaint, right?
Yeah, it's it's actually, it's the roosters.
Well, I know, but they're just complaining about the noise.
Yes, of the rooster, because in. And yeah, okay, and I'll pass that through.
Yeah, I just.
What if the chicken identifies as a rooster?
I think a chicken, a rooster is a chicken.
One of those operations again, yeah. Gender identity issues. Only you'd think of that.
And then for the the trucks, just have them call the non-emergency number for.
But yeah, I'll 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 pass that through. Because it's they've they've made a one complaint on the roosters and. Um but again, the ordinance, as I understand the nuisance ordinance, it's it's complaint driven. And so if if it's just one person. Two or three or four times, then it's like, okay, you have heartburn with that person. But if it's two or more people, then it's like, okay, then this is this is an issue. I'm sure you're gonna have.
Let them let them both sign a complaint against the noise.
Well, there's some, there's a backstory.
Chicken, as far as the chickens. I know, but they're right next door to each other.
Yes, they are.
We we've referred to the nuisance in the past, but there's actually a noise abatement ordinance that covers both these situations. That doesn't take extra people and everything, but until an officer knows about it, he can't do anything, so they've still got to call in and make the complaint, or it's gonna keep happening, so. And that one's a, I think, a class B infraction, so.
It doesn't have to be like eighty-five decibels or something. We were talking about this with the park with the noise and.
In the parks, it's different. There's different things that we're referring to here, but the noise abatement statute alone doesn't require it. It specifically says animals, fowls. Whatever. If it's uh noisy or harassing, all these things that you're talking about, it's spot on. It's the exact statute that was designed for that. Without even getting into the nuisance stuff, so. We have things to cover. They just got to do something about it. We can't, we can't guess, you know, and the officers got to find out.
Roosters have to be above a certain decibel?
No, not under that noise abatement. Doesn't even address the decibels at all.
Either way. Okay.
Good to know.
Just remembered in the park.
Right, in the parks, we we went up there with the little meters and came up with all that, but that's a completely different. That was designed more for stereos and bands and things like that, so. Those roosters, I I actually took a case to trial, a chicken case, one time up in Mulatt. And this guy wanted me to play about eight hours of this rooster crowing. And got madder and crap at both me and the judge, because we wouldn't do it, but. And then the person was found not not guilty anyway, just because he ticked everybody off, but. It it is annoying. I mean, there's no question about it, and it really gets to you at four in the morning before the sun even comes up and that rooster gets going, so.
And where there's multiple of them, it's it's a it's. I mean, once it was pointed out to me and I went over there, it was like, yeah.
Well, Edith's aware of the problem and she knows what's going, she knows there's a problem and she ought to do something about it. That'd be my thought.
Yeah, well.
She knows.
Yeah.
She she said it right on TV that she needed to fix it.
Well.
Hey, any other discretionary? Don't get too excited.
He's he's good.
Why don't you do a adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
All right.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So did you ramp it down the street with water again this year? I thought I saw you behind us.
Well, you don't need help code enforcement. I don't need to give you a phone number.